Um. The time is ten oh two, we'll go ahead and open up regular session. Silence and shut off cell phones aside from Barry, keep your mind on it and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. with liberty and justice for all. Alright, um additions or deletions on today's agenda?
Uh no, but yeah, sorry. Um I'd like to donate a vehicle to mental health.
Oh.
And I meant to bring that up in my update tomorrow yesterday.
So what are your license plate, what are my numbers?
Yes. So yeah, we we'll talk about that when you guys are ready.
Okay.
Um.
I'll sneak it in there.
It's just not on my agenda yesterday, Thursday.
What vehicle?
Uh two fourteen.
Which is what?
A two thousand three Chevrolet Tahoe.
I thought it used to be the PDP.
Do you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, sure, we can talk about that.
Sorry.
Sure. No, that's fine.
Um it is a two thousand fourteen Chevrolet Tahoe.
Two thousand fourteen?
Or excuse me, three, two, the vehicle number two fourteen. Um it is Kelly Blue Booked at a value of about four thousand dollars. Um we can either sell it or we can donate it. Mental health has been asking for a vehicle to kind of help get around town and do site visits. Um and I talked to their CEO and he said he would love for them to have the vehicle because he knew it was important to buy them. So. I I feel like it's in the best interest of the community to donate it, but I will make that decision to you guys.
Okay. Now what was the Blue Book price on it again?
Uh about four thousand dollars. I, you know, the vehicles are going high right now. We have a vehicle on the auction right now that's Blue Book for seventeen hundred and it's already up to twenty four something. So. I mean, but I feel like even if we got five thousand dollars for it, it would have more benefits to the community than our than getting our five thousand dollars out of it.
Right.
So if you guys would like to donate that by consensus, I will get that ball rolling.
Okay. Um Commissioner Schillingberger, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, my comments were that uh because it is two thousand three, I understand it's in really good shape for two thousand three, but uh you know, at eight seventeen eighteen years old now, you know, it's not gonna be far from probably being replaced. And my other comment was that I wanted to stay with mental health and not get sucked into uh a bigger group where they lost control of the vehicle.
Into the main vehicle pool?
Yeah, into Lake Health District's pool, yeah.
Okay. So.
So can you get an idea for that? I'm totally fine with that.
Um any other thoughts?
Uh that's pretty much exactly what I was gonna say.
Okay. So consensus of the board, we're perfectly fine and good with the donation of the vehicle to mental health, uh Lake County Behavioral Health as long that is um.
Stays with mental.
Uh stays with mental health and is exclusively for their use. Everyone good with that?
Yep.
Alrighty. Melanie, you have consensus?
Good to go. Um. So moving down the list, I'll make sure I keep on the clock because I have hearing. Um.
Public comment?
No public, uh you're always welcome to give comment though Danielle, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Um what what's going on with our water master?
Uh he's been held, I can answer that offline maybe. He's been out of the office for um several weeks. They've been forwarding a lot of the phone calls from his office to the Bend office. So they've been able to answer a lot of those um in the interim.
I didn't even know about it until yesterday. And then people are complaining that the Bend offices aren't responding to that.
Really? Okay, I hadn't gotten any of those complaints, but I'm. They reached the Bend office, reached out to me and asked if they could get the um the number here, calls to this number forwarded on to the Bend office. And so I got ahold of uh Josh and they were working that out. Sounded like it was, they were successful in getting that taken care of. But uh yeah, I'll follow up with the Bend office or get you that number so you can get those complaints by degree. Yeah. That's not good when they don't answer your calls. Um. Okay, Lake County Juvenile Services, uh Oregon Youth Authority. Just uh one Jake was here talking to us about this yesterday. Um there he is.
There he is.
Hey Jake.
Good morning.
Talking about.
Uh oh.
Here's Miss Schillingberger. Uh we were just going over the juvenile services and Oregon Youth Authority um item that you had on here yesterday.
Okay. Um what that is, is that is juvenile voluntary pension dollars that we get from Oregon Youth Authority.
Yep.
Um and uh. They gave money um that comes in from the Oregon Youth Authority. And historically what we've done and what we've, I assume we will continue to do is utilize that um to help pass out our detention cost. So uh every three, every quarter we get, we submit the paperwork with our detention device and we we get a dedicated amount. Um I believe the total for a two-year biennial is fifteen thousand.
Yeah, about fifteen thousand, about two thousand dollars per quarter.
About nineteen seventy five cents change uh a quarter.
Per biennial, yeah.
Um so it's about just under eight thousand dollars um a year uh that comes into us for detention. Uh to help us offset our detention cost. It's not considered supplanting uh because we pay the bill, we get reimbursed up a portion of it, so.
Right. Yeah.
And and the numbers, the amount of the money we have, there's a pot of money. And they look at the youth um in your counties um for between ages of twelve and seventeen. Um and divide that by the total percentage, so we get a percentage. Uh so that percentage allocates to our allocation amount.
Did uh anyone have any questions on this? Right down.
Okay, I'll uh I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to accept the Lake County Juvenile Services and the Youth Authority um for for fiscal impact of fifteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars.
Second.
Um motion debated, seconded, uh discussion, that's for the biennial.
It's a biennial for a two-year biennial, fifteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars is for a two-year biennial. So um it creates about, okay, seventy.
Yep.
Seven nine hundred dollars.
Does that make the in the motion itself reflected over the biennial?
That's fine.
Um alright, um any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you gentlemen.
That, thank you Jake, appreciate it. Um. Uh greater transmission repairs. Um we've got two graders uh currently in dire need of repair, it's gonna be about twenty twenty-two thousand dollars a piece to get those taken care of. Um CAP has submitted um uh a bid on getting those taken care of. Uh we would be approving this under Rule Eight, single source contract with CAP. Um I'll entertain a motion on this if there's no other discussion.
I'll make a motion to accept the greater transmission repair for a fiscal impact of twenty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars on the one oh five grader and twenty-two thousand seventeen dollars and ninety-nine cents on the number twenty-seven grader.
Okay, motion on the table?
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you gentlemen. Um museum board and Oregon Cultural Trust Committee application. Uh Kevin Winter applied for two committees, Oregon Cultural Trust Committee as well as the museum board. Um I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make the motion to accept Kevin Winter on museum board and the Oregon Cultural Trust Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um any further discussion on the item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, um real quick, we'll run through the OHA agreement, um. We've got an IGA here, an amendment, uh seventeen oh seven, um one three. I have no questions on this. It's again, just a request for delegation and an acceptance of delegation uh from OHA. Uh I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the OHA agreement number one seven zero seven one three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve agreement one seven zero seven one three of the Oregon Health Authority IGA uh between Oregon Health Authority and uh the local health authority of Lake County. Um. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, the time is uh ten fifteen. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the hearing, uh first hearing for ordinance fifty-two uh one two zero, fifty-two point one two zero. Um as it relates to uh fees for the sheriff's office. I'll leave that open for the remainder of the meeting. And then uh we'll go ahead and keep moving down the list. Public alert and warning, uh SOP, standard operating procedures. Uh Melanie brought this to us yesterday, do we have to approve the SOPs? And then we go ahead with the uh the IGA?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the SOP for the public alert and warning standard operation procedures.
Alright, motion on the table?
Thank you.
Uh motion's been made and seconded to approve the standard operating procedure procedures for Lake County as it relates to public alert and warning. Um any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll move on to the intergovernmental agreement between the state of Oregon acting uh by and through the Office of the State Chief Informational Officer. Um so is there any, any questions anyone had on this? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the intergovernmental agreement between the state of Oregon acting by and through the Office of the State Chief Information Officer and Lake County.
Second.
Uh motion been made and seconded. Um any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh only thing left is uh meeting minutes. We have um meeting minutes from work session seven uh seven six, our regular session seven seven, um emergency session uh seven twelve, and then again the work session seven twenty and regular session seven twenty-one. I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the work session seven six of twenty-one, the regular session of seven seven of twenty-one, the emergency session of seven twelve twenty-one, the work session of seven twenty twenty-one, and the regular session of seven twenty-one twenty-one.
Motion's on the table?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes for seven six, seven seven, seven twelve, seven twenty, and seven twenty-one of the year twenty twenty-one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, um. We're we're officially done with the the main portion of our uh agenda. We have a time died at ten thirty. Um we can either recess till then or unless anyone has any liaison updates. Um Commissioner Schillingberger, I know you had a meeting yesterday with Congressman Cliff Benz. Um. Feel feel free to to fill us in on that and how that went?
Yeah, so uh I was in Hood River yesterday. Congressman Cliff Benz and also Congressman Westerman from Arkansas. He's the leading Republican ranking member of the House for Natural Resources. And Congressman Benz is the lead Republican ranking member of Water, Oceans, Wildlands Subcommittee. Um. We had a good discussion with the commissioners that uh came from around uh Oregon, Eastern Oregon. And the discussion was around wildfire and timber and what are some of the things that we can do uh to help it out? And um Congressman Westerman has a a couple of plans in place uh that he is pushing for. One is uh the Trillion Trees Act. And basically it's a bill that will solidify the United States' global year wants the Trillion Trees Initiative to conserve, restore, and grow one trillion trees worldwide. Uh it has uh lots of discussion in it, talking about uh reforestation. Enhances urban forests and uses different technology, also uh promotes the good neighbor authority. And uh is some that they're definitely pushing. The second one, which I think we talked about a little bit more, is a Resilient Federal Forest Act. This act uh provides comprehensive solutions to address the rapidly declining health of American forests to prevent catastrophic wildfires. By expedited environmental analysis, reducing frivolous lawsuits, and increasing the base and scale of critical forest reforestation projects. So we got to talk to him a little bit about it. And uh you know, there's a lot of good pieces in that uh act as well as far as trying to streamline, need a little bit more uh. You know, it it removes uh cumbersome consultation. It it speeds up uh solid logging, things like that. So uh again, we just had a few conversations around the table, always trying to improve and look for better ways to do business with that uh type of discussion.
Yeah, it's a big discussion. But it's one worth having. Thank you for being up there.
Yeah.
Meeting with the congressmen and the other commissioners. It's good to have Lake County's voice and perspective at the table with as much public lands as we actually have to manage. Um. Anything uh from you Commissioner Albertson?
Yeah, so we, last night at our Fairport meeting, we um voted to finalize our master plan for the fairgrounds, so that's done done. We can start advertising that and bringing it out to the public. Um. Airport's doing well. Something else, oh I'm meeting with Derek to group um later after this meeting on our ARPA discussion that we had yesterday. Seeing if we can combine Clamath and Lake Counties to get a regional approach for either an EDA grant or other grants. I'm also gonna talk with Denise Stillwell. Let's go ahead, see if we can get possibly a generator for um North Lake water and um see if she had any ideas on a regional plan for Clamath and Lake and our small communities and their water situations. And we're up in for that under, but it'll be mostly based around water, so.
Perfect.
I think that's all I have.
Alright, um we'll go ahead and take a quick uh five-minute break. Then and we'll reconvene at um ten thirty. Thank you, uh Hank, you have the uh you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. I appreciate you guys giving the audience here and also I wanna thank uh Mel or uh Dave with me along here. Uh before I start, I wanna thank you guys. Uh I think you're doing a great job uh business-wise. Uh I think you're getting your butts kicked politically in some areas and I've only addressed that today. Uh I, so do you have the package in front of you?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna read uh a part of the first page uh so I can keep it short. And uh I think some uh some new things are going to uh assault you today. And so uh to keep it short, I wanted you to have a transcript of what I have to say. So anyway, I'll start off with uh uh this presentation will stretch your sanctum uh because your definition of Lake County is the same as your grandfather's Lake County, which is diametrically different to the Lake County Bar Council's definition and uh Assemblyman Kate Brown's definition. Your ORS twenty-eight dot zero two zero requires that they answer the people's questions and they refused. So it's Lake County five years ago and a copy of that uh is attached uh in your package. The people of Lake County are increasingly educated because you are not protecting their constitutional rights. The problem is you don't know the Constitution. You don't know the politicians' rule of tactics or how to reach lawful solutions. I think Mark, Brother Mark has uh he's uh developed a weapon that I I really enjoy. The matter is he has learned how to use uh the jurisdiction weapon. And it has worked for him, I've uh he's told me about it a couple of times. Anyway, I propose a ordinance that I call the Lake County Full Trust Authority Ordinance. And this is, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. And uh ORS twenty-eight dot O two O requires an answer for the people's questions. And the questions that I have presented in the attached letters were refused. And you will note that Lake County has asked asked these questions as well. And I'm sure at that time, Lake County just said to the Bar Council uh what should we do? And the Bar Council said, just don't do anything. And the reason that we are in trouble is because we can't get to truth. Anyway, here is, it's very simple. Uh number one, all purported officers, agencies, courts, and authorities in or about Lake County, Oregon will answer all questions of law, venue, jurisdiction, constitutional power, and definition. Without the authority, foreign agency, interlayer, uh which means, I'm a little confused if you didn't know. Without the procedure within thirty days of submission, our authority and power over the Inquirer in Lake County. Number two, all purported officers, agencies, courts, and authorities in or about Lake County, Oregon will verify under penalty of perjury without fee or procedure requirements within thirty days of submission if they have not used the deceptive process against the Inquirer or Lake County. Or use all authority and power over the Inquirer and Lake County. At this point, rather than continue, uh I think, because it's taken me a long time to understand uh even with my background in guerrilla warfare, it took a long time to understand what Kate Brown and the the bar is doing to the people. What this will do, what this ordinance will do will return power and sovereignty to the people. And uh we've gotta have government, no, I don't think anybody who denies that. But uh we can't get to truth, we can't get solutions because we can't get to truth. Anyway, I'd like for you to uh entertain what I presented. Uh read the package and back, and letters, two letters back where they refused to answer the questions of the law. And uh then invite me back with questions that you want me to answer, something that you don't understand. Uh and and allow the people to ask questions. And I'd like the questions ahead of time so that I can thoughtfully uh answer them in writing. But anyway, uh that's all I wanna present to you today. Uh uh unless you have any questions, uh I will close. But if you do have some questions, make sure you can give them.
Okay.
I have questions, but I wanna research some things first and I will write them down so I don't forget and present them to you so you can thoughtfully give me the answer.
Okay, that'd be great, that would be great. And and also, you know, again, going back to what I started, your problem is you are back at your grandfather's definition of Lake County and that is a torch. Kate Brown and the bar are doing. And also one other thing I should tell you right now, that the Bar Council is not gonna like this. And the reason is that they can't proceed without the such, they're they're at this stage, it's a fictional place. And they're requiring the people to go to a fictional place and uh and know maybe a hundred thousand pages of law uh before they can give solutions that belong to them in the first instance. But anyway, uh thanks guys very much, anything more uh than I can answer today?
Uh no, I think uh at least as far as on my part, you know, I'd like to continue to look at this and formulate any questions that I might have and maybe present them in writing later or or give you a call and talk to you over the phone, so.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great, thank you guys, thank you Mel, we'll catch you later.
Alright, see ya, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Thanks Hank. Um, Mr. Bailey, are you, did you ever get to join the call? I don't think so. Alrighty, um, I'm just gonna. Uh, Commissioner Schillenberger, were you able to, to hear everything alright?
I did.
Okay. Um, with uh there being no other further business before us, I'm gonna go ahead and close the uh, oh, excuse me.
Okay. Perfect.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then you're gonna close the meeting.
Oh, close the hearing.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay, alright. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing that we have for the ordinance fifty-two point one two zero. Um, having no public comment or any comments given on that hearing. Um, and then I will, we will also adjourn uh today's regular session at ten forty.
Is that the first meeting on fifty-two one twenty?